I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, founded in a vision with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I am going to suspend the order of the agenda tonight. We have a very packed agenda. And I'm gonna just start by taking public comment at the end of the meeting. So that will get moved until the end. Julie, please remind me to come back to it at the end. I did sign the VW 2311 for Staples, the VW 2310 for Amazon, the VW 2310 for North of Boston Ad. I signed the PR 2310 for the Select Board and the 20 for the Select Board and Julie O'Brien and the PR 2311 for Julie O'Brien. Under Grants, Gifts and Donations, I have, we have received fiscal year 23 Estate 911 Department Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant for $18,000. Fiscal year 9/11 Department Support and Incentive Grant for $31,908. Fiscal year 23 Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant for $15,498. A Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant for $2,940. And the Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant for $5,600. Can I entertain a motion to approve those grants?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I, I...
Jerry.
Do we have to match, because they're grants? Do we have to match the amount that we're doing?
No, they're not matching grants. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a council on aging donation for $20 from Ruth Rock. We have another council on aging donation for $250 from Frank Bertolino. We have $35 from June Grogan, $16 from Nancy Story, $30 from Dean and Judith Robertson, and a $2,000 donation from the Central Congregational Church, which was a result of their chocolate tour.
Motion to accept donations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, under new business, we have staff recognition. Patty, can I ask a favor? Could you go see if they're ready? Please, and thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I need the Senator Tar, please.
Oh.
The good Senator Tar.
I'm sorry, the Shellfish Constable was distracting.
How are you this evening, Senator Tar?
I'm well, thanks. How are you, Madam Chair?
I am well, thank you.
Nice to see you.
So, we have a staff recognition for the Senate and the House of Representatives. I assume you're representing the Senate. Do you have any knowledge of what's going on with the House?
The House will be arriving very shortly.
Okay.
About three minutes ago, he was five minutes away.
Do you want me to put you on hold? I'll put you on hold until he arrives. All right. Thank you. I'm Colonial Power Group. You have about a 30-minute presentation, do you think? How long is your presentation?
Oh, it'd probably only take me maybe 10 or 15.
Wow.
Okay.
Good.
Depending on questions, but that's all.
We'll take you up next. Thank you. Why don't you start by saying who you are and explaining what you do and why you're here?
My name is Mark Capitoner from Colonial Power Group, 5 Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass.
And I'm Denise Haller from Colonial Power Group.
What we're here to discuss tonight is municipal aggregation for the town of Newbury. It's about having choice. This program is about a choice that many communities, about 175, have across Massachusetts that currently Newbury doesn't, doesn't currently have. So, there's a, there's a process that's a little cumbersome, but it's not too difficult. The real problem comes when you get to the department. So, there's a couple of steps. We're here tonight to let you know that we need a warrant article on the town meeting. I believe that the administrator has a, some language that should have run by. That would have to pass town meeting. And then after that, we would create a plan. And that plan would be hung for 30 days. And after that plan is hung, we would need the Select Board to vote on it, approve that. Then we would go on to the DOER. After the DOER consultation, it doesn't last long, maybe a half an hour, we go on to the Department of Public Utilities. Unfortunately, at this time, the Department of Public Utilities is broken. It's just, it's not functioning correctly. It's about three-plus years right now to get a plan through. So, how do I want to say this? So, we're hopeful that the new administration, maybe some things will change down at the department. But municipal aggregation is about electricity, and it's about choice in your electricity bill. So, that was the process. What does it mean to the end user? It means that you'd have a choice rather than just having National Grid as your supplier. You, I'll give you an example. This current, this current winter, the City of Newbury Port just actually opened up their program. And rather than paying 33-891, they started the program, and their rate's 21-7 for the next four, from January 1st until May. What is it? So, there's one hot button I have been standing here in front of you, I'm gonna talk about. This program is opt-out. What does opt-out mean? It means if you don't opt-out, everyone that's in, on basic service in the town of Newbury would be included in the pool. As long as you're on basic service, you'd all get a mailing before it ever started, but you have a choice to make. If you don't make a choice, that choice is made for you. You'll be entered into the pool. It doesn't mean that you have to stay in the pool. That just means that you ultimately have to get out of the pool. Opt-out municipal aggregation. That isn't what we do. It's the state statute, 164-134. It's the only way to get energy companies to bid on your load because you create a load profile that they're able to bid competitively. It's why we're very different than third-party suppliers that go knocking on doors. So, if you decided to stay in the program, what does it require you to do? Actually, nothing. You just continue to pay your electricity bill like you would to National Grid. All of the benefits that you're currently getting from National Grid, you continue to get from National Grid. If you're on a low-income budget billing, automatic withdrawal, all of those issues, they all stay in place. So, it's about a choice that you don't currently have this winter that other communities have. And you want to talk about the opt-out, Denise? Just back forth?
Yeah, you can, you can go back and forth. So, if you don't initially, like if the program launches and you're not initially trusting of the program and you want to see how it plays out, you can opt-in at a later date. You can, you know, initially opt-out and you can choose to opt-in a month later or two months later or six months later. Then you can opt-out again or opt-back in. The key is, we don't have, we have quote-unquote dumb meters in Massachusetts. We don't have smart meters. So, you can only be enrolled or dropped from the program on your meter read. So, you know, typically you get your bill and you look at your bill and you say, oh, I'm paying this much. Maybe I want to join this program. And then you would go to opt-in. Unfortunately, your meter read might not be for another three weeks or so. So, you're not going to be enrolled until that next meter read. So, it's a once-a-month opt-in and opt-out. But you can move back and forth without fear penalty. So, from basic service to the program or to a third-party supply, you can kind of watch the rates and kind of take the most advantage. Or you can just stay in the program. But you do have the opportunity to kind of make the most of it, so to speak, if that's what you want to do.
So, I wanted to just add, why take this step? This winter is an, it's an exaggerating example. But other communities have the ability. So, National Grid, they're indifferent about price. I know that sounds odd. Oh, they're out there working for us to get us the best price we can. They're actually not. And you could ask National Grid, they're going to tell you, they perform a process, they buy twice a year, they buy 50% of their needs and they ladder their buys. So, they buy in September for a November start, and they buy in March for a May start. Those two six-month periods, two 12-month strips, those two six-month periods that overlap, that's your price. Well, they're not looking, this year here, unfortunate for all of us, this year, they picked the worst day in September to buy. We wouldn't even gone to the market. Nope, we're not gonna buy, we're gonna go in. But that's the day they go to market. They bought what they needed. Two years ago, we're at historic lows. Everyone at the company, I'm sure, now you go buy for three years. They're not allowed to. In this program, it allows you to use common sense or, you know, with a professional energy person. Right now, we're not saying to go long, right? We're at a historic highs. But two years ago, we would have bought as long, you know, power for four years if we were able to do it. That's why you're going to see some of our company, excuse me, some of our municipalities have nine-cent rates this winter because of when they bought energy. It's all about choice and your control. It's all local control. You get to decide the color of the green, how much, how long, you know, term. I don't know if renewable's a big thing here, but if they wanted to offer a renewable product, you can certainly green things up as well. So, again, local control and choice, all of which currently you don't have.
Okay.
Just, just open for questions.
Yes.
Just for the sake, because you're on television too.
Yes.
If you said, and I don't know if you were just using it as a hypothetical example, but what do we, what's National Grid now as a rate? Do you know? I'm sure you...
Of course I know, yeah. 33-891.
And we actually could have actually, if we had bought two years ago, be at nine this year?
Yeah, we have lots of communities in the nines back in 2020 during the pandemic when we, you know, there was a giant glut of gas. It was at historic lows, but a dollar...
Which I'm aware of, yeah.
Yes.
So, we would be maybe enjoying one free year right now because you could have bought in terms of three years.
Three or four years, yeah, you could have bought the energy, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the City of Newbury Port, like this was an, this is a 10-month, like Mark said, split term, four and six. And that was intentional just because prices are so high. But, you know, we're in the market right now, you know, watching the market, and the city will go back out before the end of this contract and sign something if something, if the market dips off and something's favorable. If we can do a 36-month fixed, the city will probably do that. But they just wanted to get some savings to their residents, so they started off with a split 10-month. Usually, a fixed, longer-term contract is preferable, but you're not going to do it at the detriment of the rate parity. Yeah.
Yeah, Jerry?
So, if a person opts in, what function does National Grid then play?
They still, so...
And who is actually supplying their needs, their energy needs?
And I'll start again. So, I just want to use the correct terminology. So, National Grid is a utility. They're nothing more than a poles and wires company. They no longer generate electricity or any of those things. So, we would, we would contract with one of the energy suppliers in Massachusetts that are serving municipal aggregation. Constellation, Direct Energy, Dynergy, a company like that. And National Grid would still do all the functions that they currently do. They'd read your meter, power goes out, issue with your bill. All of those things would be that way. I just want to, and I understand why you said it, ma'am. So, you said opt-in. Anyone could always opt-in, but when the program starts, this is a, this is a big issue. When the program stops, there's a pool of people that are on basic service. They would all get a mailing. If they did nothing with that mailing, it's opt-out. So, you don't need to do anything. Say you got the mailing, you took it, you threw it in the trash. You're gonna be enrolled in the program.
Okay, okay.
Big difference than opting in, though, I'm saying to you.
Okay.
Okay. That's the only thing. But I did answer your question?
Yes, but, but who, you said "we." Who is the "we"? Who's your company?
So, we're a municipal aggregator. So, we work for you, the town, and take you through the local and state process. Then at the end of it, we bring you out to the marketplace and find those suppliers that are gonna bid on your load.
So, you're like the middleman?
Absolutely the middleman.
You're a broker, right? You're a broker. And you consult at the beginning, broker, when the RFP...
Yeah, we morph into a broker. Yes. We prefer consultant, but... You're correct, though, at the end, it is brokerage.
I can't wait for Jerry. But Jerry, were you looking for a name of what these folks call themselves?
Well, yeah, you could tell me a name.
Colonial Power Group?
Colonial Power Group.
Colonial Power Group.
Correct. If you go to colonialpowergroup.com, we work with about 82, 83 communities across Massachusetts.
So, I have a question.
Please.
The market goes up and the market goes down.
Yes.
You said that we have, when National Grid buys, they buy, they have a set date and they buy, and that's what they give out to their rate, their rate holders, whatever.
That is correct, yes. Basic service cost.
And it's a 10, they buy 10 months, is that what you said?
12.
12 months.
12 months.
What would the, what would you do? And how is the town affected by what you do? Like, do we have to, I guess?
So, all we would do is we'd show you the pricing to allow you, with our expertise, talk you through. So, let's just say there was a, for 10 months, the curve was backwardated and the price came down, right? So, if I go out, if I go out 36 months, three years, my price is nine. But if I, if I take a 12-month, my rate would be 12. So, on the backside of it, something's happening in the energy markets, bringing things down. We'd have a discussion about the long-term gains of that, that lower price now. Could you be over the rate that National Grid gets 36 months? Sure, that's a very, but you will have absolutely stabilized rates for 36 months and given people a choice that doesn't exist today, which I'm sure people would... Just our phones are ringing like crazy, so I'm sure everyone wants a choice. We're at a historic high. We hope that this will go away soon.
Right, so, and it, it will. Nothing lasts.
Forever. At this price, we can't afford it.
Right, right.
Correct.
So, so who would, from the town, would this, who would you work with at the town? The town administrator is...
So, normally what would happen is the Select Board would give it the authority for the administrator to sign the contract. I'm making up days, between six months and 36 months, and, you know, this type of green and so forth. And during that day, so we run a process. Two weeks before we go to pricing, we do something that's called indicative. Show everyone all the pricing with all the suppliers, run through that. So, all the questions that you might have, Tracy, we're gonna, we're gonna work through all those. So, the day that pricing is due, it's just about price. Now, we all know what we're looking at, we're gonna, we're gonna have pricing. And at that day, believe it or not, it's, are your town accounts out? You might have already been through this. Do you take your town accounts out to third-party supply?
Yes.
So, it's exactly that way. You know how you have only a window of time?
Yes.
So, we would get pricing at 11, get it to you for noon, and then by 3 o'clock, we would need a signature so that that company could go out and buy what we call an electricity hedge, set that hedge, so that that power would be ready for whatever the term was that we were, we're gonna move forward on.
Right, and hopefully we will have honed in on a term and a product from the indicative round, so you're not looking at so many prices on that day.
And the one thing I want to say is that this is one of those things, and we've had it happen numerous times. By no means, because we bring pricing to the table, does that mean that we have to sign it. I might bring you pricing, and you might say, yeah, I just don't feel comfortable. We just tell the companies, town has not moved forward at this time. The City of Newbury Port has had an order since 2016. They sent a contract six weeks ago for the first time. So, it's truly, the power's in your hands. All we need you to do is just manage, right? Just make the decisions.
Now, does Colonial have more buying power with the more towns? How does that go?
That's a great question, sir. So, I know everyone's going to say, well, it's the Walmart effect, right? The more I buy, the lower my price. But I'm going to tell you, so, one of our clients happens to be the City of Boston. The City of Boston's current price is 11-1 for their standard product. Now, that has a little, a little green in it, about 10% more. There's a small town out west, client of ours, called Wendell. For the last three years, it had the best price in Massachusetts, 8-7. They're still paying that until January of 2023. So, it really comes down to what I call load profile. And I certainly don't want to bore you, I'm happy to talk about it, but it's the customers in a pool, when you're using the power and how you use that power. We, we package all of that together and then get it out in the marketplace, allow them to bid on it. So, as you can see, there's a little bit more risk with that larger load. We wouldn't know until we got your data from the utility exactly how that load looks in comparison. But everyone has a different load.
Jerry?
Yeah. Besides a better price, is there any other advantage in going with you?
So, a couple of things, right? First would be experience. All we do is muniag, and we do it in Massachusetts. We've been doing it, we're the first ones to do it, we're gonna continue to do it. I consider us a surgeon rather than a general practitioner. So, from that perspective, all you get is muniag experience, 100%. Two, from, from a standpoint of, if you wanted to do something regionally, almost all the other communities here, I mean, I might miss one here, but Salisbury, Amesbury, Haverhill, Methuen, they're all moving forward with aggregation right now. Now, whether or not you want to have a collective buying group or something like that in the future, it would leave options open.
So, my question is, you said this is a process.
Yes.
So, let's just say the board votes to go into this aggregation. Well, we would vote to put it on the warrant at the town meeting.
Correct.
Then, once it passes town meeting, then it would come back to us for a vote.
We would create a plan, and then Tracy would hang the plan for 30 days, and after...
What does that mean, hang the plan?
So, we would put it up on the web. I'll let you...
Yeah, I don't know, I think we, I don't know if this is in their packet. I think we set some implementation steps perhaps, didn't we? I don't know if it's in the packet or not. Okay. But, yeah, so, we would create a plan, and then that, it's called an aggregation plan. There's an education plan component to it, and you need to post that on the website and hard copy for 30 days for public review and comment. We would then need to collect all that public review and comment, and then you come back to the board for a vote to approve or adopt the plan to move on to the next step. So, that would be the end of the local process right then for approvals. And then, like Mark said, you'd go to the Department of Energy Resource, or we'd pile everything together, the votes, the materials, et cetera. The town doesn't need to do that. And then we'd schedule a short consultation with the town administrator and the DOER to go over the materials, and then, once that's approved, to get a letter from the DOER's attorney saying everything's in good order. And then you add more materials. The DPU has a set filing of what they need to see and in what order, and then that gets submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for review. You wait for that to happen, and once you have your order, you're good to go. And then whenever you're ready, or when the market warrants, we go out to bid and run an RFP for power supply. So, that's kind of the process. Like Mark said, it depends on how long the DPU takes with the new administration.
So, the DPU right now is a two, three-and-a-half-year backlog?
Yeah.
Two-and-a-half to three-plus years of a backlog.
Initially, it was about a six-month approval process, but now it's, there's about 35 towns in there waiting for orders from the department.
It's got real bad. Unfortunately, I, I don't think it's just, I don't think that it's...
Well, that's a, that's a...
I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's just muniag, but I, you know...
Want to say that again?
I don't believe it's just muniag. I think they've had issues with the MBTA and solar and all sorts of things. So, we're hopeful that a new administration might breathe some new life into the department.
Right, of course, those towns that are in there, 33 cents, they could have had an order, they could have been out, you know, Newbury...
Well, that's my concern, is that, you know...
But until you go through, I mean, once you do that, you're ready, and you get to move at your own pace after that. So, without that approval, you can't move forward. So, that's the, you know, cart before the horse, you know? Or horse before...
Yeah.
Did I also notice, or did I read into what you said? Is there working with a group like yours or a company like yours?
Yeah.
And is there also a regional approach that...
If you wanted to do something regionally...
So, there's like two different ways?
You could, so, we do things lots of times individually, and then there are other times where, you know, people, Marimack Valley Planning Commission might say, hey, we could all get together, or we did it in Franklin County, there's about 12 communities, much smaller communities than what I'm talking about here in Marimack Valley. But depending on what, what you wanted to do, some of them thought it's, it's a good thing because there's safety in numbers for the people sitting in these seats. Meaning, I don't have eight cents and you have nine cents, how do they get eight cents? How come I got nine cents, and so forth and so on?
And I mean, it's the same process with the department. You come out, you get your order, you can decide that with whoever's, like if end dates of current contracts line up, we can have that conversation. You can still select your own product of what's best for your community, for Newbury. You just would have to, if you're gonna go with others, it was just usually the same supplier and the same term. So, everybody would have to go with Constellation for 24 months, but then Newbury Port maybe wants a plus 10% extra renewable for their standard product, but another community just wants a, you know, the minimum renewable requirement. You get, you still retain the right to make that decision. It's just you're picking the same supplier and the same term so that the supplier can go hedge that load.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess my prior question, the users, what do they get? Do they get anything besides a better price from, from doing this?
And it could be a greener product so that it reduces carbon. And they could, you know, now, a better price might mean stability. So, I wanted to, so let's just, like, run it through, say, oh, it's 12 cents, which from a historic standpoint is around the average. But rather than going to 33 cents and down to 10 cents, you just pay this steady 12 cents so people can budget, you know, their usage and so forth. So, there's a lot of other benefits that can come from aggregation, you know, but they're not, the obvious ones are really local control and stability.
Yeah.
They don't want us to talk about savings. There has been savings, but it's not something we want to, because I, if I could control the market, sure, we could do this in the Caribbean, but...
Tracy, do you have any questions?
Nope, I think I have a pretty good understanding.
Okay.
I will say this, great presentation, not that easy to put all the facets together. And we're gonna have to explain it in a real different manner at town meeting, or they'll just throw their hands up.
I, I think what's gonna happen is as, as we go through the, the implementation schedule, each, each step will become more and more clear. And I have had probably three or four residents reach out that are aware of it.
I've had one reach out to me, too.
More supportive of, of at least getting in on a town...
We were in Newbury Port at an information session, and people, you know...
That's where it came from. Yep, that's exactly where it came from.
And they've heard of it, so, yeah.
I will tell you, we will go to town meeting if you want that, if you want a presentation with...
Oh, yeah, we would want one.
We, we're happy to provide any of the information required, is all. You know, that's just...
Hear it from the voice as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, whatever makes it easiest for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I don't think we need a vote tonight, right? We'll just vote to put it on the warrant?
If you want me to move forward with exploring it.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to ask the town administrator to...
Motion to ask the town administrator to explore going forward.
Second.
Okay, any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, now, Senator Tar and Representative Mira, nice to see you. We have a staff recognition.
Nice to see you, uh, Madam Chair, and through you to the members, and, uh, nice to see the administrator and legal counsel for that most unique of occurrences, when we have managed to, uh, capture the evasive, uh, former police chief John Lucy for some special recognition here tonight. And I take great pride in having conspired with all of you to do that. And I wanna congratulate everyone that was involved in the conspiracy, including Chief Fisher.
She just denied it. Your chief of confidential people.
But I, I think that, uh, we're all aware that there is, there was not a chance that we were gonna let you escape town service without having some form of recognition, John. For everything that you've done for this community, everything that you have meant to this community, your outstanding leadership, and for truly your dedication over the years. And we all felt that it was appropriate, uh, and as, as much as we know that you don't like public attention, except when you're operating a backhoe or in a six-wheel vehicle on the beach, as much as we, we know that you don't like public attention, we all thought it was very appropriate to give you some. And to let you know that all of your work over the years has not gone unnoticed. And your extreme dedication in late nights, early mornings, around the clock in some instances, whether it be out at Plum Island, or dealing with a storm, or dealing with some other contingency, you have always been the person at Newbury P D that we know we could go to, particularly for the most unusual of situations, to be able to help us all get through it and to work with everybody as a team. And so, I am extremely honored to be here tonight to be able to thank you and congratulate you for your years of service. And we know that your time in the chair of chief was only about a year, but we also know that long before that, you were in the trenches with the men and women of the Newbury Police Department, providing that leadership. And we are all so lucky that you did ascend to the role of chief, because as the capstone of your career in law enforcement, you deserved that role, and you handled it exceedingly well, particularly with the integration into the Department of the new police station, which every time I spoke to you about you were beaming with pride, and you wanted to tell me about some new aspect of it that I had to come and see. And so, it was good to be able to see you usher in the station. But the station, again, is certainly one of many accomplishments. But I think the thing that we're all most grateful to you for is your absolute determination to make the department the best that it could be, to ensure that it responded to every contingency that could arise. And perhaps the most important thing, to make sure everyone in this community knew that the Newbury P D would be there when they were needed, no matter how, when, what, or why. And so, I'm very pleased to be able to bring you the greetings of the Massachusetts State Senate, and please, please come up.
I'm glad I dressed for the occasion.
Well, there are those that will.
John, there's a photographer right here, so.
There are those that will analogize this to the sighting of a unicorn, so the fact that you're not in uniform, it's just completely.
I'm glad I shaved.
You forgot under your nose.
I did, I did. This one, my wife will not let me take off.
But, um, this is from myself and my colleagues in the Senate, and it reads, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Chief John Lucy Jr. of the Newbury Police Department in recognition of your twenty-four years of service to the Newbury Police Department, including two years as chief. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, particularly in the role of clam warden, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk. And this was signed by our Senate President Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk Michael Hurley, and, uh, offered by myself on December seventh of two thousand twenty-two. And, uh, I do have something else for you, but I, John, I just wanna tell you how proud I was to be able to offer this citation, because you are a very good and close friend, and we have spent many hours in very interesting situations.
You don't talk about them.
Well, we're not gonna, the statute of limitations has not run, and we're not gonna talk about them tonight. But, did you get that, Counselor?
I got it. I appreciate that.
But, but the fact is, um, we do have a strong friendship, and, and I appreciate that as much as anything else that I've described.
As do I.
So, it's a real honor to be able to give this to you. And, uh, Lenny and I also have another citation, because you have other fans in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so, uh, this particular citation.
I'm usually the guy that gives out the citations, this is so weird.
We're keenly aware of that. Unlike the ones that you give out.
Yeah.
You don't tear the bottom of this off and send it to us. If you wanna send it to us, we'll take it, but you don't need to, so, um.
And you won't get arrested if you ignore it.
So, very good, so. So, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to John R. Lucy Jr., on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your twenty-four years of dedicated service to the Newbury Police Department and your two years as chief the seventh day of December in the year two thousand twenty-two. And this is by Charles D. Baker, the governor of the Commonwealth, and Karen E. Palito, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth.
Thank you so much.
When the governor was signing this, he said, is that the guy that rides the motorcycle? And I said, that's him, so, John, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Chief, listen, to add to, uh, what Senator Tar has brought up, anytime we get to, um, address and, um, provide a citation to a police officer or any safety personnel, I'd like to remind all in attendance that, you know, we live in safe and secure communities. It's one of the many reasons why we like living in a place like Newbury. But that doesn't happen on its own, Chief, it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we have the best trained, the best educated, best equipped law enforcement officers in the industry. And, uh, it is a testament to your many years of professionalism that Newbury remains a safe and secure community that it is. And, um, we thank you for that, for your years of service, uh, for making our wonderful town what it is today. And, uh, I also have a citation, which of course is more fun than getting one from you, I'll read from it briefly. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Police Chief John R. Lucy Jr. in recognition of your well-deserved retirement after thirty-six years of dedicated service. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this thirteenth day of December two thousand twenty-two. It's signed by Ronald Mariano, the Speaker of the House, and by myself, Lenny Mira, your state representative. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
All right.
And last but not least.
The town of Newbury would like to, um, sincerely thank you for your thirty-six years of dedicated service, keeping all of us residents here, um, safe. I echo what Lenny said, we are a safer community because of the police and the fire. And, um, we sincerely appreciate your contributions.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I could indulge and, and suggest, due to the magnitude of this moment.
Yes.
It might be appropriate to take a brief recess so that we can all take a photo with the former chief.
That would be wonderful, thank you. So, I would entertain a motion to recess, five minutes?
Motion to recess.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's all get over there, and we're gonna bring all these.
Mira, do you want to take this picture? Agenda a little bit, I'm gonna ask Tracy to, um, present part of her town administrator's report next for, um, an upper request presentation by the town clerk, Leslie Haley.
I'm ready.
Oh, look, we have video.
Yes, so, um, we put in a grant for upper funds to preserve our remaining a hundred-ish volumes of very historic materials. It is a lot of money, and I totally understand that, but it's, um, they don't make a do-it-yourself kit for these kinds of things. So, um, this is where we're at, this is just a, a picture of what we have at this moment that's in need of preservation. Go ahead, um, just can flip through that one. I don't know how well you can see these handwritten notes on these ledgers, but, um, they're, the writing is just incredible. It's an art in itself, um, and they, they are not in good condition. Many of these books, uh, we have about a hundred, I think, that are in need of preservation, and we were told that thirty of them are in desperate need of preservation. So, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Ethan, um, Ethan Cohen, the, um, gentleman who does all the filming and everything, took some pictures for us, 'cause I don't touch those books, because I'm just afraid they're gonna disintegrate in my hands. So, this is just a little bit of a sample of the condition of these original volumes. So, you can go ahead. Treasurer's book from sixteen, seventeen sixty-four. We were not the United States then, we were the United Colonies, so that's how far back these things date.
Wow.
Um, that's an unfortunate picture of what the book looks like at this point, go ahead. And just a little sample of, you know, the incredible detailed writing and, um, artistic abilities that they had with a pen and an inkwell at that point.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty incredible, go ahead. Contributions to the church, who knew we had a book of contributions to the church from seventeen oh seven, go ahead. Um, it's about this wide and about this long, and again, it's just, it's all handwritten, and I am told that some of the paper that we have involved at this point in time is handmade paper.
Wow.
So, it's, it's crazy old stuff, and it's really, it's really neat to look at. We want people to be able to see it forever. And the way it's going right now, that's just not, they're not gonna last, go ahead. Militia enrollment for nineteen twelve, I know there wasn't a specific war going on at that same time, but people, gentlemen, were enrolling at that point in time. The binding, uh, on the edge is completely gone off of that book, you can go ahead. But this is, I mean, who writes like, people can't even read that kind of writing anymore, but it's beautiful, go ahead.
They didn't have a, they didn't have a template that you could.
No, 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 go ahead. Lots of treasurer's books, lots of assessor's books, you can go ahead, go ahead. Again, it's, it's just all, it's very detailed, it's, it's just perfect writing, and, um, this, this is one of my favorites. This is the book of earmarks of the town of Newbury, go ahead, um, go ahead. This is what the outside of, uh, this is a different book altogether, I don't know how that got in there, go ahead. These are the marks that they put in the cattle's ears.
Oh.
Back in the day.
Say that again, Leslie.
Marks that they put in the cattle's ears. Right? I am told there are, we have one of three left in the country of these books. So, I don't know how they got the cattle to stand still while they put these marks in their ears, I have no idea.
Where's J R.?
I know, I was hoping he would be here so that he could answer some of these questions. But, um, that's, that's okay, that, that's really one of my favorite volumes that we have. This is a collector's book from the early seventeen hundreds, and this one has actually been preserved. So, this is, this is how they did preservation probably twenty-five years ago. They took everything out of this binder, and they put it in a new binder, go ahead. And so, every, all the pages are original, they're just in new binding, and they test the paper, and they treat the paper when it's necessary so that it's no longer deteriorating. And then, they put it in this, uh, sort of a box. So, this would be one that's already been preserved in, uh, more closer to what we do now, which, um, go ahead. They all, each page is individually placed into a plastic sleeve after it's been treated and put in a new binding, um, so.
And that will help with the oxidization of the.
Yeah, everything, yes, absolutely, go ahead. This is just a few of, a selection of what our preserved books look like now, as opposed to the ones that you had seen at the very beginning, that, um, what we have to work with. So, we are very much hoping that these funds will preserve these books for, for future generations, because otherwise, they're, they're just not gonna be around, and they can't be recreated, so.
I, thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I have a question, and then I'll ask the board. Um, where, where are these books stored right now?
Right now, we have, um, three huge cabinets that we have everything that's preserved stored. The ones in the boxes are the ones that we're hoping to box up and send to the company in New York for preservation.
And then, when they come back?
They're gonna go in that new vault in our new building at twenty-five High Road.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, you've done a good job keeping them this long in that condition, to tell you the truth.
Well, we don't touch them. We don't breathe around them, you don't touch them, you don't let anybody touch them, so.
So, Jerry?
Um, do you, I know, uh, for people who are doing geology, um, that's good.
Genealogy?
Geology, yes.
Do you have any, um, books on the marriages and births and deaths?
Well, we've had most of those already preserved, and they are actually, um, on the website, uh, on our Laserfish portal already. So, people can actually go in there, the public can go in and re, do their own research on geology. Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep, so, we've already done a, a fairly significant amount of our preservation needs, but this is, this is the last of it, this is, and it's a, it's a significant project. It's gonna take them probably about five months to do it, once they.
And this is the end, there's nothing else that needs to be?
This would be it for, for what we have.
Tracy, how much does she need?
So, this request is for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. We actually have two requests coming before the board this evening.
One twenty-six what?
Seven hundred and thirty.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to spend a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars of our upper funds.
Motion made.
To restore and protect the remaining history that is in the town clerk's office. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thanks so much.
No, thank you for bringing it to us, 'cause I never knew you even had that.
I know, well, we hide them, that's why.
So, that, that completes the restoration, Leslie.
Yes, yep, I mean, there may be some points down the road where the books that were done early, early on would need further retention, but I don't see that coming.
Well, it's pretty, that's impressive.
Anytime soon, so.
Okay. Do you wanna give us the rest of the upper, or do you wanna do it later?
Sure, we, um, we have another upper request before us for, um, completion of the municipal fiber area network. You may recall, we received, uh, grant funding in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. The project is gonna be closer to four hundred thousand, so, um, we're, right now, we're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand to allow us to be able to complete that project.
So, you need a motion for upper funds for a hundred and fifty thousand to complete the fiber network?
Yep.
Question?
Sure.
Um, is this for this building or for our future needs?
All of the buildings.
All of the.
Matt, you wanna talk about it briefly?
That was, that was town, town-wide, yeah.
Ties all of our municipal buildings into.
Hi, Director, uh, Matt Cooper, IT manager. Um, the fiber mu, the fiber municipal area network, uh, used to be called, I believe it used to be called, I forget the old name for it, will connect every mi, every, uh, municipal building with a private high-speed network. It is not dependent on an internet provider, it is not, uh, dependent on a lease, it'll be ours for the duration of its lifetime, which, based on professional experience, can be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five years. Um, the technology itself, the fiber optic, is not changing anytime soon. Increases in performance and technology are more or less trying, are finding ways to squeeze more through the existing, you know, flexible glass pipe. Um, it would connect all of our buildings, uh, town hall, police, uh, both fires, library, D P W garage. Um, it would have the ability to expand out later, should we, well, it'll have the ability to be expandable if future needs dictate. Um, this would allow us to have better disaster recovery, in the case of a site disaster at one of the buildings, um, because that high-speed network will allow data to be duplicated or move, or have a backup copy moved elsewhere so that that site is no longer available, we still have that information, that, that part of the operation can keep going like nothing happened. Um, it would allow us to save money on various utilities, because instead of having a high-speed internet connection at every single building of varying degrees, we can have maybe one or two, one main one and a backup one across town. Usually, if there's an outage, it doesn't hit the entire town, it usually hits a portion of town. Uh, this fiber area network would be separate from whatever internet outages there would be, and we could simply piggyback along it so that buildings in affected areas would still have, uh, internet access. So, for, for example, the fire department, which uses, uses a product that, uh, has a lot of web access, that means if the Central Street Station is being affected by an internet outage, they're not losing access to the information that Three Morgan is using at the same time.
So, you can, if you're, let's say you're, once this is, solution is installed, if you're at the firehouse in Byfield, and there's a power outage, they can jump to the.
Yeah, in the case of the public safety slash first responder buildings, police and fire, they all have dedicated backup generators. So, in the case of a power outage, and say they're, this would be due to a physical problem, like someone hits the, a branch hits the, the Comcast line, and it goes down, or the power lines, they go down. That fiber line is much more durable and will, short of an act of God, will be up. Um, they almost never encounter problems. But, yeah, they would, they would still be able to use that fiber net, network to connect to the next available host who could get them hooked into wherever they need to be.
So, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't lose their internet, so to speak?
Correct, yeah.
Have we partially done this, or are we waiting?
We're in the planning phases of doing it.
Okay, and we need the extra money to complete.
We can't go out to bid until we have the project fully funded.
It's something that, uh, many communities either have already had for a while, or are in the process of actively getting set up.
Well, I know we got that grant that you wrote for us, we won that grant, so.
Yes, which goes along, which goes a long way to covering the, the cost. Um, it's not a small cost, but it's one of those investments that we'll be able to enjoy for, you know, maybe till I consider retiring. It's a, it's a very long-lived kind of a lifespan.
Okay.
Yeah. You didn't include the schools in, in the list of buildings that it would cover, are the schools included?
I did include sixty-three Hanover, I did include the elementary school, um, for multiple reasons. We do a lot of activities out of that building, uh, including town meeting. Uh, the council and aging still uses that, uh, site as, or has plans to at least keep using that site as an auxiliary site. So, we'd wanna make sure that a good, uh, well-connected network would allow things like communications, uh, security cameras, various systems like that would be able to go all over the place, no matter where the town collectively is operating.
It wouldn't be Triton, right?
Uh, Triton had not originally. Uh, Triton had not originally been considered in the scope.
That doesn't belong to the town of Newbury.
Correct.
It belongs to the district.
Um, however, the design of it would allow for consideration at a much later date, so.
If need be, you could tap, tap into it.
I, I don't know that. That's a legal question we have to.
Oh, yeah, no, no. So, I'm sorry, she's right. From a physical standpoint, it's not impossible. I couldn't speak to the administrative end of things. That's, that's town admin, admin territory.
Yeah.
They have their own entity, so.
Yeah, they're their own entity. Okay. Um, any other questions? How much does that leave us with?
Um, that would leave us with about seventeen thousand dollars, our playground money.
Okay.
And I, I should also note that some of these projects, as they're completed, there are balances available. So, once I get a report from the department manager that the project's complete, whatever available balance goes back into the pot and can be appropriated. Um, we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Four, right.
To vote those amounts, too.
Okay.
Yes, I, there, I, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but, um, are there any, you know, big bills, um, that you anticipate we'd need more than the seventeen thousand?
I, I, no, not as of this time. I, a lot of the money that we've already spent on the AWPer fu, using the AWPer funds are funds that we would have spent to fund our capital plan. We would have used free cash. So we have monies available in those funds if there's any kind of catastrophic emergency.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Barrett.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We did.
No, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We did.
Oh, you made the motion?
Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Now discussion. Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
No worries. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so we passed over, did I already?
Surplus, should we do the surplus for that?
Yeah, did I already mention about? Did I mention the Fish Commissioner coming back to that in January?
No, you never mentioned it. You never made it.
No, okay, so we were, we did have on the agenda tonight to appoint the Fish Commissioner, um, but we don't have a full board, so we're gonna wait and appoint, uh, in Ja, January when hopefully we'll have a full five-member board. Okay, so next, uh, for approved, we have John Ferrara as for the council and aging. Can I have a motion?
Motion to appoint to the council and aging, John Ferrara.
Uh, any discussion? It's nice of him to step up and serve.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have Caitlin Tully. This is a full-time patrol officer. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Caitlin Tully, full-time patrol officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, did you wanna speak?
Uh, as you'll see, you have a letter from me in the, um, packet that will say that on April fourth, um, two thousand twenty-two, the Newbury Police Department posted a full-time position for a full-time academy-certified police officer. We had not had luck filling that position. But I am before you tonight asking that Caitlin M. Tully be appointed to the position of full-time police officer for the town of Newbury, Mass. Ms. Tully passed a complete background law enforce, law enforcement background investigation, including a psychological examination and oral interview process, and comes highly recommended from law enforcement employers. In addition to having successfully completed the MPTC basic training course for Massachusetts police officers, Ms. Tully has five years of law enforcement experience and training with the Haverhill Police Department. She was awarded the two, uh, two thousand and twenty Haverhill Police Department Employee Excellence Award and was selected a top candidate for the Haverhill Police Department Behavioral Health Response Unit. Um, she is also trained as a school resource officer, um, specifically to the Behavioral Health Response Unit. We are in the infancy stages, um, with partnering aid, um, local police departments to get this program up and running as well. So it's attractive to me that we have somebody who's already been through it and has a successful program. Uh, Ms. Tully is also a veteran of the National, Army National Guard from two thousand eleven and two thousand seventeen. During my interview with her, I learned that her professional goals are really in line with the philosophy and practice of the Newbury Police Department and that she's really looking to work, uh, in a smaller kind of community-friendly policing department. I think everything about her makes her be a well-rounded police officer in the town of Newbury. I think she's really in line with what I'm looking for, um, for staff and what the community has become accustomed to in our hiring process, especially for full-time officers.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Barry.
So I'll entertain a motion?
Um, did we do it already, too? Yes, no?
Am I?
I think we did.
Okay, sorry. So now we have discussion. So any que, any questions of Patty?
I don't have that. Jerry? I don't have a question. I just, I'm, I'm just very happy to finally see a woman to get appointed. It's the first time in two and a half years that there's been a, an appointment to the police department of a woman, so I'm very happy to see that.
And I'm thrilled that she's such a qualified candidate.
She seems very, very, very qualified.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm smiling because I'm just thinking between Tracy, Alicia, and Patty, I think we have a pretty good representation right now. They seem to be running the joint.
Running the police force.
Yeah, yeah, we have the chief. We have female chief.
Yeah, well, yes, she's the only one. Well, there'll be a second one.
Dispatch, there's dispatch, too.
Thanks, Patty.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
We also have to declare a surplus, uh, two thousand and nine Ford F-250 from the police department.
Motion declare surplus to two thousand nine F-250, or whatever, from the police department.
And also another one for two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer for the, from the police department?
And add to that the twenty-seven, the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any questions? Jeff?
Yeah, I know.
Jerry?
Yeah. Um, the, the first, the first automobile only has, only has ninety-six thousand. In my book, that's not a lot of miles on it. I mean, is it in, is it in terrible shape that we're replacing it for the Fish Comis, Commissioner? Shellfish Commissioner, Constable rather?
Um, the vehicle has already been replaced. It was voted at, uh, town meeting and the new purch, the new vehicle was purchased. And this is the process that we have to go through to get the surplus, to get it declared surplus before we can sell it at public auction.
I, I, I just note the low mi, I, in my opinion, it's low miles, but.
But I think we accelerated this because of the AWPer monies, right? Is that true or false?
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. You're right. It wasn't town meeting. It was AWPer funds. It would have been town meeting. It was on the capital plan. Thank you for the correction.
But it was, we accelerated it because of AWPer money. Yeah.
So we use the AWPer money?
Yes. Yes, we, yeah. Yep.
And Jerry, that, that's capital planning, too. Sets those things in motion.
And this two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. You guys, you still here?
Public property request from the Lions Club. Come on up.
Nice to see ya.
Thanks for coming out in a cool evening. Not bad. Bob LaFrance with the Newbury Port Lions.
Don Carey with the Newbury Port Lions. We're requesting to use, uh, Topps Lane.
Topps Lane?
Yeah. For quite a while, they've been on our back to get the, get the race off of Story Avenue. And, uh, the police, the state this year gave us a real bad time because for the last thirty-seven years, they shut the ramp off on ninety-five for four hours.
This is for the road race, the Newbury Port road race?
Thank you, Home County Road Race. Basically, and this is just a guess, we went into Newbury at the town line approximately about six fifteen. And we should make it through Newbury, down through Rolfs Lane, and be back on Water Street by about ten minutes to seven. It's about a little over half an hour that we would be in the town of Newbury. And to change the race, it's not a very easy thing to do, to get it ten, ten miles in Newbury Port without going into some real bad areas. And right now, uh, this race would start at High Street at the high school. We would go down to Rolfs Lane, which is a straight road, through Rolfs Lane, onto Water Street, all the way up to the Chain Bridge, uh, up Spofford Street.
How did you, uh, from the high school to Rolfs Lane, how'd you, what, where did you go?
Yeah, one A, high school.
One A, yeah. One A, yeah. Yep, good.
One A.
Uh, all the way up to, up to the Chain Bridge, and then we would go up Spofford Street. At the top of Spofford Street, we would turn right onto Ferry Road. Then we would go across the overpass on ninety-five, and then the road would turn into Pine Hill Road.
In Amesbury?
No, we're in, we're in Newri, Newbury Port.
So, um, you lost me on Spofford Street. Go ahead.
When we come to, near the Chain Bridge.
Yeah, Ferry Road. Oh, that road, that way.
We turn left and go up Spofford Street.
Yep.
There's Marzley Street, Water.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And at the top of Spofford Street, we would turn right onto Ferry Road. And when we crossed over the overpass on ninety-five.
Okay.
We would go down just a little ways, and there's a street called Wickham Street on the left. We would go down Wickham Street and come back up Halcy Street, which is, that would be a U.
Yep.
Then we would double back, which we've never done this before.
Yeah, you can have people running two ways.
And we're running to, both ways.
Both ways.
We can divide the street.
I think it's, it's, I think it's wide enough that we can, we're gonna cone the street off and we'll have people up there. And then we go back down Ferry Road and then straight right back to the high school, which, like I say, it's not very easy to come up with ten miles. We've, I think I put four hundred miles on my car trying to ride around. I've been out in the industrial park and, uh, this race is, well, this is, uh, it'll be the sixty-third race or something like that, and we've had it for thirty-seven years.
So it's got a great history. Uh, how many participants usually?
Lot.
We had twenty-two hundred last year.
That's what I thought.
The biggest, the biggest part of it is in the five K. We only had seven hundred of those in the ten mile.
Ten K, okay.
The ten K keeps growing. Now, the ten K is very straightforward. We go down High Street. We go down Federal Street, come up Water Street, to Oakland Street, to High Street, back to the high school.
So, the part that's, the part that will run through Newbury, High Road to Rolfs Lane to Ocean.
Is the ten K.
That's not the five K.
That's a ten mile.
That's a ten miler, which.
That's just ten mile, right?
This year, that's dropped off quite a bit, and the five K has more or less picked it up.
So the part where you're gonna have people running back and forth in the same, that's the ten K. That's not the five K?
No, that's the ten miler way up in Newri, Newbury Port.
Okay. Um, Chief Fisher, you, you, can I ask you to come up? I see you've signed off on this. Do you see any?
It's, I've spoken to them, and it will require quite a bit of detail officers in order to facilitate, um, that piece, that small piece that they are in Newbury. We are willing to do that. The only discrepancy that I'm gonna be factoring in with those details is, um, how quickly they make it through Newbury. I'm gonna wanna see how quickly they make it through town, um, as, you know, so we can plan for the future. But I'm erring on the side of it's going to take longer.
What's the date? I forget.
August first. It'll be August first.
Is there another piece of paper attached to that?
Yeah.
Leave that.
Yes, some information.
That's, that's the one if everything goes well.
My job is to plan on things not going well and make sure we're still covered. I hope it goes well, but we need to plan for any worst case scenario.
So the first, the race starts at six-ten PM, based on six-minute miles, the fastest runners, and fifteen-minute miles for the slowest runner. The first runner should hit the Newbury line at approximately six-nineteen PM, then Rolfs Lane at six-thirty, and then Ocean and Water Street at six-forty-five. The last runner should hit Newbury line at six-thirty-two, and then Rolfs Lane at six-thirty-nine, and Ocean and Water Street at six-forty-five.
Those, those times were based on runners from other years.
Years past, yeah.
And actually, they were a little bit less than that. I just put a little bumper in there in case.
So, so one of the other things that we spoke about is this race is gonna, um, render Plum Island.
Yeah.
An island. So we ha, we've factored in having, um, police and fire stations stage on Plum Island, um, in the event that there's an emergency. So we have discussed covering that part.
Not, not trying to change anything, but for that reason, there was no way, just 'cause it didn't add up to like going out by the school, let's say, our round school, so they didn't really isolate Plum Island. In other words, instead of going down Rolfs Lane, going.
They'd have to be on Route One.
That would make, that would give us more mileage.
That's what I was afraid of. Yeah, so.
Plus enough to stay.
See, the problem is, this is a, is a sanctioned race.
One A is a state highway.
The problem that one A is stated.
State highway. Both state highways.
Yes.
And I was just thinking it'd be nice to.
What does that do for anything?
I had discussed he would need to speak to the state about permission, getting permission to use the state highway.
But do you use it in Newbury Port? Do you run on Ru, High Street in Newbury Port?
Yeah, that's part of Route One.
One A.
One A.
Right from State Street up is into Newbury.
And this one, one thirteen, we used, and we had no problem with the.
The state gave you permission?
Yeah.
How long are we tying up Plum Island?
About half an hour. Forty-five, forty-five, an hour. Say an hour.
Because, because of, you know, both streets, Water Street and.
But basically, these runners in the ten miler, if they heard a siren, they would get out of the way.
Yeah.
They would house.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Get run over.
Yeah, most of them are experienced runners and, and at that stage of the race, they're still reasonably fresh. You know, they're only running the third, fourth mile.
Well, I feel a little better that it's ten K and not five K. Five K, I mean, I know I passed out water at this race since thirty years.
You're our biggest water stop. And you will get a break if we use Rolfs Lane because they won't catch up to each other.
Yeah.
Like they normally do. They're, they're all there together at the stop at Gall.
Yeah, it's just difficult. That hill on Rolfs Lane is a tricky hill, so.
Now, for years, uh, you supplied an officer at the foot of Parker Street and sent traffic out Parker Street. Now the race is.
So we would close the road, right? We'd close, so you would want to close, so you close early. I know you closed the road early. So if the race goes off at what time? Six?
It goes off at six, and the road gets shut off roughly at five-thirty.
At the high school.
At the high school.
That's just so we got the runners in the road. The rest of the streets are, are open.
They're open, but then I know I've tried to go down that way, down Rolfs Lane, and they've shut that road down, too. In Newbury Port, they've, there's been a cop there. I have to sneak around the other side in the back and then walk. So I don't, I think we're gonna have to close Rolfs Lane sooner rather than, is my point.
Well, you're also closing the lights, so if someone's gonna get down High Road, they're gonna have to get down like Route One and come back up by the school and get down.
Yeah.
Get down, put the green, they're gonna have to get down Green Street, right?
And in front of the gas station in Parker, plus from closing Rolfs Lane. So that's what I'm saying. It's, it's a hefty bill on their end for the detail officers for it.
And, and putting the fire station, uh, you know.
Plus the officer on Plum Island and the fire department details.
There was no other way to do it. Not in, keep the runners happy. Even, even when I went out into the industrial park, I still needed Rolfs Lane.
And, and these are details?
They are details. It's not taxpayer funding. And they would privately pay for the officers, yes.
Pay for it, okay.
Actually, if, uh, we could stop Story Avenue, we got eight hundred dollars that we have to pay the troopers to get down and put them cones and then come back and get the cones, so. We got eight hundred dollars there.
I don't know if that's gonna touch what you need to do in Newbury, but, you know what?
Whatever, whatever it costs, we're happy to do it.
I guess you could try it one year, yeah, see what happens.
How do you, how do you make money?
Do, do you charge the runners?
Yes.
Each runner is charged a fee.
Every penny we make is donated back. We donated $22,000 local this year.
For fireworks? No, what do you, what do you donate to? Oh, no, you donate the lions, you do the eyes, yeah.
We do the eyes on iResearch.
iResearch.
Half of it goes to iResearch, and the other half goes to the multiple charities that we support in Newburyport.
We do a big thing with your, uh, local food pantry. We've done three food, food drives for them at Shaws, and.
The First Church.
On their building thing, we donated $4,000 for their building.
Their new building, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the, uh, in the Newbury food, food pantry.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any other questions? Jeff, you wanna illuminate a little on it?
No, I mean, it's a tall order. It's, 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 it's a tall order because of, you know, the date in August, you know, it's busy. And it does isolate, you know, for a period of time, the island.
For an hour.
I mean, if someone had to come up from the island, they wouldn't get stopped. They would go through the runners.
In an emergency?
In an, in an emergency.
We just have to have the staffing to accommodate that safely, is, is what.
What's Jeff's point is, I think.
If you didn't have the staffing, uh.
We wouldn't be doing the race. Sorry.
And Newburyport cops, bring in cops from out of town.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I mean, the thing that's hard is, it sounds like Water Street was always in play anyway. It's least by the rest. So, you know, Water Street was always in play, but Plum Island, we come up and get off on Rolfs Lane.
Yes.
Now we're whacking them both ways.
Along with taking one of our busiest stretches in town, our small little stretch right there in front of the green. That's, that's the difficult part, it's those twofolds.
In the middle of the summer.
I'm almost, I'm just.
Well, the thing is, I'm trying to think about this. We, we have to have messaging out on the island so that those people know?
We would have, we would post on, signs on the road.
Yeah, but they need to know well in advance that if they need to come off by that date, that they need to get off for an hour. 'Cause they'll be stuck there for an hour.
You have a reverse 1-1 call? I think you ought to go back and tell Story Street they don't, Story Ave., they don't have a choice.
What happened on Story Ave. again?
I don't know.
Well, it's just, it's a little congested on Story Avenue. You got the two supermarkets.
All the shopping centers, the banks. And when we started this race years ago, that area was nowhere near as hectic and congested as it is.
Remember when there wasn't a light there?
Right, there was no light there. Accident waiting to happen.
So who's giving you a high time for that? The city?
No, well.
The state?
Well, also, the, uh, city of Newburyport Police Department have been on our case for several years to try to get off the ramp in going over 95. And so, um, this year, they finally pulled the place, said you can't do it anymore. So we have, that's why we're forced to look for a, a nice straight course for the runners, 'cause otherwise we're zigzagging through neighborhoods, and it would create a lot more confusion.
For the reference.
Right, yeah.
All right, so my concerns are allowing the people on Plum Island, giving them enough know, enough warning that this date, it's gonna be closed down.
I think we could probably get a large one, them flashing boards.
Those generated signs that flash in advance.
Put it at the airport the week before, or?
And there's also, there's also one at Peter Hall.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I'm torn. I understand what you're saying, but I also know how meaningful this race is to the community and the good the money's raised by it.
In, in their letter, they do indicate that they'll have first responders stationed at the airport, so.
It's the inconvenience, I think. I'm comfortable with the.
Is it possible to double lap your 5K to do it that way? Or do you like to have one?
No, no, that's, that's not gonna work.
Now, the 5K is 3.1 mile.
But I didn't know if you could double it and then add, and then add to it.
Yeah, run it twice.
Yeah.
And you got 2,200 runners all at once.
And you guys have looked at this on like Google Earth and like tracked, you know, really done it spatially, looking down on it?
We've had computer-generated pro, you know, different, uh, courses that we would try, and this seems to be the, the most direct. Otherwise, we'd be either going into the industrial park, then we'd still be hitting, uh, Route 1, crossing over the Route 1, which would create another, another problem.
I have run at least seven or eight different courses in my car, trying to, trying to figure out.
Well.
It's just like, you know, I'm trying to project, I'm trying to think in my mind, are the plover closures off the island? Is the refuge gonna be full? Are the beaches full? I mean, you know, hmm, if you start to back up cars on Plum Island Turnpike, that's gonna be tough to get. Well, you can always get on the other lane, 'cause no one's gonna be going by on that lane to get an ambulance down there. I suppose one lane would be free anyway, because you would be stopping traffic so you could get down the wrong lane with an ambulance.
And it, we are used to, when they do work on the Plum Island Bridge and we have to station, um, at Peter Hall, we are used to having to do this for short periods of time.
But Patty, like I said, if you had cars backed up the whole length of the turnpike trying to get off, there's not a lot of room to pull into the marsh to get them off.
So if they're gonna be coming down and they can't get off the island, they're gonna, it's gonna be an hour. You can't just, it's not like it's a, a railroad crossing where you just wait till the thing goes up. They're gonna have to be told to turn around and come back.
The other side of the road, um, Alicia, 'cause you're stopping traffic here, you know, the inbound side, the ambulance would be running down that anyway, so that.
Well, yeah, but I'm worried about, no, no, these people turning around and coming back, going back home, because it's gonna be an hour before they can get out.
Yeah, yeah. It's a toughie 'cause of isolating, you know, for an hour during August, Plum Island.
There's really no other way to go.
Which isn't part of, you know, kind of the festival of the whole thing, but, um.
I mean, if it wasn't a sanctioned race.
I know.
It wouldn't be a problem.
What do you mean by, who sanctions it?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a sanctioned race for people that run that 10 miler.
There's money in Boston.
And to qualify for other races.
All right.
It's, it's a big deal. They've had people from Kenya come in and run it, and they come from all over the world tomorrow. It's a big deal.
Obviously, I'm not a runner, so.
Neither am I.
There again, it's, because we have to change it, uh, we had the race sanctioned in 2019 and spent $750, and we're gonna have to do that again.
Once we get this established and settled.
Well, I think with the right messaging and the right warning and advance notice.
There isn't that many houses on Rolfs Lane either, and I will make sure that everybody on Rolfs Lane knows that there's gonna be a road race, including Newbury Village.
Yeah.
We have another neighborhood, we have neighborhoods off of Rolfs.
Yeah.
The, 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 the catch 22 is, the race had been established over the years in kind of the proximity of the route you've been running.
Yeah.
So it's been tolerated, or it's been part of it, and it's been part of the fabric of the communities. This is just totally new.
Well, not really, because they have shut down Rolfs Lane in the past, 'cause I.
For the race?
Yes, 'cause I couldn't get to the water stop. I had to drive over here.
Why did they shut down Rolfs Lane or Water Street?
Uh.
'Cause it's Water Street, Water Street.
I think Water Street.
Not Rolfs Lane, 'cause you wouldn't isolate the island.
Yeah, I came up Rolfs Lane, and then I couldn't get down Water Street, so I had to.
So we're isolating, we're, we're taking both avenues away. So, and it's just gonna be really new. And it's a stretch. And, and I might be making too much out of it, and.
Well, I think, I think we.
What, Jerry? I, well, I guess I, you know, I'd give them the, give them the shot, and if there's a problem, then next year.
Yeah, we're gonna rethink it.
We're thinking.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, the chief's on board.
I was just gonna say, the chief's on board, it's enough for me, so.
The chief's, but my only point is, I'm with messaging, 'cause we get reamed for not telling people what's going on. So I'd like to really start.
Like I say, if, if you have a message board, if you don't, then we could put at the airport, maybe a week before, you're saying that 7 o'clock, it might be a little.
Yeah, reverse 911, and, yeah.
We'll also supply the town with the insurance, a million-dollar insurance.
Yeah, you have to do that.
We'll probably, this, this will probably gain some recognition after tonight's television broadcast.
My recommendation would also be notification to the businesses in that area that might be open, you know, we.
Yeah.
Because I see there's the potential, um, for the butchery to be impacted negatively.
And the beach coma, I mean, anybody like this.
Yeah, all the restaurants.
So they can just sit in the beach coma until.
Yeah, have another drink.
Have another drink.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Um, but it's only for an hour.
Could be less.
Oh, yeah, run fast, somebody be there with a camera.
Has the Lions, has this race ever gone out of Newburyport proper before? Is this the first time having to go into another town?
We've always turned down Marlboro.
Marlboro.
Which is part of.
No, we were, it was basically going our way out through Mardley and coming up Gypsy Lane. Hmm. I tried, tried at least actually, when we come out of Gypsy Lane, I tried Turkey Hill Road.
Yeah.
Out to Hale Street, went a mile and a half too far.
All right, well.
Is there a motion? Was there a motion?
No. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Newburyport Lions Club, uh, use of High Road to Rolfs Lane to Ocean Ave. on August 1st, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM for the 10-mile road, road, road race.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Jeff's uncomfortable and itchy. Okay, so, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jeff, what are your reservations?
My reservations are, as I have expressed, I just think, I mean, we've isolated the island in a lot of ways for like the Plum Island, I mean, we, the roads get clogged up for a lot of different things. This is just kind of really, the road is closed.
For an hour.
Yep, and it's, um, but what's hard for me is it's a good event. It goes to charities. Patty's looked at it, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, but it's a stretch for me. So it'll certainly, it'll, it'll get a year.
I know for a fact that I stood on one of those corners, and some of those people that you tell you can't come up here will run you over, and they're going anyways.
Well, you don't want, you don't want that either.
No.
At all, so.
That's all you need in detail.
Okay, maybe they'll find out after this that, uh.
You'll have to, really, will you have enough people for detail?
We will, we may have to resource out to area departments, and I will coordinate with them on early scheduling for the details, so that I can confirm that we actually can put the amount of bodies that we need there, um, for the, for the event and the duration that we kind of, again, anticipated for worst-case scenario, that, that.
When you have a detail, don't, it's a three-hour minimum anyway.
We have a minimum hours, yeah, so, yeah.
You won't be able to work with Newburyport too, because this should cut out some of the details that they needed for Story Avenue.
Yeah, between the extra details that they would have needed and the state, uh, police force, we'll just be shifting the funds to Newbury.
I mean, basically, we, we shut down Amesbury, and we shut down West Newbury, the way we're doing it now. And what West Newbury ends up doing at Gardner Street, they send them out Gardner Street, they'll find their way back to Low Street. Amesbury shuts the Chain Bridge down for a lot longer.
Yeah.
Because the runners take a while to get up there.
But we're creating gridlock for a short period of time. There is no other alternative, more difficult route, but again, we're hoping that it's a short period of time.
Yeah, it's creating the true island.
Yes.
I don't know when it was, but we did use Rolfs Lane a long time ago.
Don't say that, 'cause you're not now. So hopefully it wasn't because it was a disaster.
No.
All right, so I have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Begrudgingly.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I hope it goes well.
You bet.
And, uh, maybe we'll see you next year.
All right. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Have you got some chewing gum? You want a glass of water? Got a lot of, a lot of names here.
Well, we have a one-day liquor license, let's take that one really quick. For Mercury Brewing and for the Old Newbury Bonfire.
Uh, motion for the one-day liquor license for Mercury Brewing Old Town.
Is there a second?
Old Newbury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just the, the, wanna say the date, so people listen and know.
Do you wanna read them, Jerry?
Yeah, it's the date of the Old Newbury Bonfire is January 14th, 2023.
Where did you get that, Jerry? Out of the inside of it?
Yeah.
Good, yeah, so.
Okay, so I have a list of, um, liquor licenses, and we have, um, this, new business licenses, but we also have, um, executive session, and I am cognizant of town council, sitting so patiently in the corner, so I was hoping that, to move into executive session to handle town council, and then we can, we're gonna reconvene back in open session, so.
Motion.
I need, hold on.
Yep, you got a motion.
So.
There you go. Motion, executive session, move the board into, into executive session in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, to review, discuss, and consider its response to the open meeting law complaint filed against it dated December 1st, 2022, filed by Jack McBicky, on, filed with the town clerk, whereas the discuss of this matter in open session would have detrimental effect on the board's litigating position, and so the chair declares it, and to reconvene in open session to vote and to approve the same.
There a second?
Second.
And you need a roll call vote.
Yeah, Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. All right, so we're gonna clear the room, and then we'll be back in probably five minutes. If you wanna come back, we have still have a packed agenda.
Clear the room and shut the, yeah, shut the door.
Town Council's response to the open meeting law violation filed, um, against the select board dated December 1st. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go back to the agenda. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, and we'll see you all soon if I don't.
Welcome to stay for the meeting.
I, I appreciate the invitation, truly do.
Okay.
And if I don't see you all, happy holidays.
Yes, happy, happy holidays, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
We have a lot of liquor licenses, and there's several different ones, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have to do them separately, 'cause remember a couple of years ago, this changed, and I have to specifically use this language here, so I'm gonna go ahead. These are for Massach, this is under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15. These are off-premise licenses, um, for all alcohol, as follows, so. licenses for all alcohol as follows. So this is number 89184PK0794, Adel Screevo, doing business as The Corner Cupboard for Hanover Street. I need a motion to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Adello Screevo DBA Corner Cupboard. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Motion to approve the Corner Cupboard for Hanover Streets request for off-premise liquor license with all the contingencies being met.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I think moving forward, I think, I'm gonna move them, Jeff. I just need a second, because the motion says I move. So I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for the Silvanowitz Family Associates DB Incorporated DBA D&amp;J Liquors, 53 Main Street. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC. Two, a receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, DBA The Cottage Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
Favor? Aye. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Pizza Factory Incorporated DBA Plum Island Provisions, 29 Plum Island Boulevard. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. Approval of any changes in the ABC, in the license management premises of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC and a receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
You have to note that it's just wine and malts as opposed to the other ones that were right now, this was all alcohol.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Thank you. I jumped right over that. I'm gonna go back. So this is an off-premise license for wine and malt, not all alcohol. So I, again, I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Pizza Factory, DBA Plum Island Provisions, 29 Plum Island Boulevard. The license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. Approval of any changes in the license management premises or of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC, receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jerry. So this is another malt, wine and malt license. The PK, PK, I'm sorry. I move to approve, I know, I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for The Butchery Incorporated, DBA Newbury Butchery to Morgan Ave. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. Approval of any changes in the license management premises of other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC and a receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, this again is another wine and malt. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Wyatt's Market, DBA Wyatt, 6 Fruit Street, Unit D. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or of other ABCC requirements received be received from the ABCC and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is the licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premise, wine and malt only. This is, I approve to, I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Bob Lobster, 49 Plum Island Turnpike. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC. Two, issuance of a certificate of inspection. Three, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate. And four, receipt of a worker's compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, this is the licenses authorizing the sale of beverages to be drunk on premises for wine and malt for a club. So I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Old Town Country Club Incorporated with current manager Christopher Muse Marshav. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC, issuance of a certificate of inspection, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate, and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Licenses issuing, licenses authorizing sale of beverages to be drunk on premises, all alcohol. This is, I move to approve 2023 retail license renewal for the Rusty Can LLC, DBA Rusty Can, 9 Fruit Street. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC. Two, issuance of a certificate of inspection. Three, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate. And four, receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Again, beverages to be drunk on premises. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Old Newbury Golf Club, DBA Old Newbury Golf Club, 319 Newbury Turnpike. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC. Two, issuance of a certificate of inspection. Three, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate. And four, receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Plum Island Beach Coma, 23 Plum Island Boulevard. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC, issuance of a certificate of inspection, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate, and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Plum Island Grill. I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for the Plum Island Grill Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Grill, to Plum Island Boulevard. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC. Two, issuance of a certificate of inspection. Three, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate. And four, receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I move to approve the 2023 retail license, retail license renewal for the Sunset Club LLC, 2 and 8R Old Point Road. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC, issuance of a certificate of inspection, receipt of the liquor liability insurance certificate, receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Licenses authorizing the sale of beverages to be drunk on premise, all alcohol hotel. The, I approve to, I move to approve the 2023 retail license renewal for Plum Island Blue LLC, DBA Blue Inn on the Beach, 88 to 20 and 22 Fordham Way. However, the license shall not be issued until the following criteria have been met. One, approval of any changes in the license management premises or other ABCC requirements be received from the ABCC, issuance of a certificate of inspection, receipt from the liquor liability insurance certificate, and receipt of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I will entertain a motion to sign the ABCC renewal certificates for 2023.
Second. What do you want, a motion for that?
Oh, I just.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I moved it. I moved to sign it. You seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Did you do the renewal certificate and then we need the seasonal population?
That's next. It's over here. So now I move to sign the ABCC 2023 Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Form.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was the liquor licenses. I need water. And now we have business license renewals.
Are you gonna go through those all at once?
I think so. What I'd like to do is just read them. If there's one, somebody has a hold on, you can hold it, we can go back and discuss it. There is two, two full pages of them.
Yeah, and then one on the third page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where do you go?
I think to get the water.
Am I voice cracking? Feels like a scratch.
I think Tracy might be getting this.
That's good. Thank you.
The drawing.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that.
I was gonna turn correspondence, but since we have a downtime, isn't that a beautiful picture?
Yeah. Yeah, Christmas time. Nice.
That's a thank you. Happy, happy holidays. So, all of us.
Yeah, listen very clever. Tracy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tracy. You're welcome.
Okay, that's better. So I'm gonna go down the list. I would entertain a motion to approve the following business license renewals for 2023. Elizabeth and Michael Houlihan, DBA Roots to Wings, 76 Newburyport Turnpike, general business, health and wellness. William D. Francisco, Stowaway Storage, DBA Newbury Self-Storage, 131 Newburyport Turnpike, general business, self-storage. Nassar Abu Eid, DBA Al Prime Energy Consultant, Incorporated, 17 Central Street, auto marine, gasoline, car repair, sale of related goods. Jeffrey Christensen, DBA Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, DBA The Cottage Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, general business, package store. Jeff Christensen, DBA Plum Island Rentals LLC, DBA The Cottage, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, general business, surf, paddle, kayak, skate, sales and rentals. Jeffrey Christensen, DBA Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, DBA The Cottage Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, parking lot. David John Moulton, DBA Riverfront Marine Sports Incorporated, 292 High Road, auto marine, sales, storage of boats, marine supplies, gasoline. Alana L. Matzis Dunn, DBA Flipping Out Enterprises, 109 High Road, as a coach and consultant. Kendall Bowie, DBA Mad Martha's Island Cafe, 51 Northern Boulevard, common victueller. Hours of operation Tuesday through Sunday, 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Thursday through Saturday, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Elise Guy, DBA Boston Born Inc., 65 Newburyport Turnpike, a tattoo shop. The Silvanowitz Family Associates Incorporated, Main Street Minimart and D&amp;J Liquors, 53 Main Street, common victueller. James Sullivan, DBA Rusty Can, 6G Fruit Street, common victueller. Ronald Barrett, DBA Barrett Transportation, 18 Hutchinson Road, general business vehicle transport. Ronald Barrett, DBA Plum Island Taxpayers Association, 8 Plum Island Boulevard, common victueller, parking lot. James Noys, DBA Noys Auto Service, One Noys Lane, auto marine, auto repair. Jaden Auto Incorporated, Jeremy Keohane, 6 Newburyport Turnpike, used car dealer's license, class two, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicle licenses. Francis Broadberry, DBA Plum Island Grill, 2 Plum Island Boulevard, common victueller. Carla Capalupo, DBA Carla Capalupo, 26 Plum Island Boulevard, parking lot, entrance and exit from Plum Island Boulevard only. Steven Andreolata, DBA Steve Service, 72, 52 Main Street, auto marine, auto repair and sale of related items. Steven J. Keevil, DBA SK Tree Service, 71 Main Street, general business, tree service. Steve Services Incorporated, care of Steven Androlata and Andreotola, 52 Main Street, used car dealer's license, class two, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Newbury Auto Sales Incorporated, James Motskin, 16 Newburyport Turnpike, motor vehicle junk license, class three, buy second-hand vehicles for the purpose of remodeling, taking apart or rebuilding and selling the same, or the buying or selling of parts of second-hand motor vehicles or tires, or the assembly of second-hand motor vehicle parts. William and Louise Robital, DBA Pheasant Meadow Farm, 7 Paul's Way Farm Products. Linda Gamash, DBA Sadie's for Hair, 6J Fruit Street, general business, beauty shop. Ryan Guthrie, Brendan Guthrie, DBA The Inn on the Beach, 24 Fordham Way, common victueller inn. Ryan Guthrie, Brendan Guthrie, DBA Inn on the Beach, 24 Fordham Way, parking lot 11, Fordham Way. John Gallant, DBA Jay Gallant, pools and spas, 96 Newburyport Turnpike, general business. Elizabeth Moulton, Kyle Martha Moulton, DBA Surfing, bait and tackle, 30 Plum Island Boulevard, general business bait shop. William Kowski Jr., DBA Bills Auto Repair, 24 Middle Road, auto marine, subject to the restrictions and conditions of the special permit issued on 2/26/86 and the decision of the zoning board of appeals of 8/699 for the property located at 24 Middle Road. Gary Macheros, DBA Applied Automotive Technology, 101 Newburyport Turnpike, Unit 45 Auto Repair. Angie Service, 101 Newburyport Turnpike, Units 4 to 5, used car dealer, class two, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Schneller BMW Performance, DBA Michael Morris, 26 Middle Road, Unit 1, general business automotive, subject to the restrictions and conditions of the special permit issued on 2/26/1986 and the variance issued on 11/17/1994 by the Newbury Zoning Board for property at 24 Middle Road. Norma D. Reader, DBA High Tail Acres, 120 High Road, farm products, beads and related items. Christine and Doug Rup, DBA Harmony Natural Learning Center, 6769 Newburyport Turnpike, general business education. Lynn Duchesne, DBA The Access Clinic for Wellness, 19 Central Street, Sweet C Acupuncture. Rosa Carr, auto sales owner, Dersi Marchado Moriara, sorry if I messed that up, 26 Newburyport Turnpike, used car dealer, class two, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Do I have a second?
Well done. Second motion to accept is read.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Okay. No old business. Tracy, do you want to continue to administrate your point?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Having received the official notice from the town clerk that she is indeed retiring from her position effective December 31st, I'm gonna need a vote of the board to appoint Gretchen Gerard as the town clerk until the next election. And there is a general law reference, it's Chapter 41, Section 14, that allows you the ability to do that until next May.
Motion to.
We did the same thing when Leslie took over for her.
Yep, motion with pleasure to appoint Gretchen Gerard to the position of town clerk.
You want a second?
No, I don't. On discussion?
Then I'll second it. Now that was good.
All right. Is there anybody else who, who is interested in the position? Not that I'm aware of. We haven't, it's an elected position, so we, we haven't advertised it as we would an appointed position. Gretchen has, it, it's, you know, we, we try to make every transition as seamless as possible because it's elected. Obviously, you can't control the outcome, but Gretchen has been working under Leslie, training, as she is interested in running for the position. She is a resident of town, so.
Well, lucky she's there.
Yep.
Town clerk is a very important position.
Absolutely.
Even almost more important than us.
Can be.
Want to take one more, Jerry?
No, no.
Nope, you're good? Got your ready questions? Do you have comments, Judge?
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor to appoint Gretchen as the interim town clerk?
Aye.
Fall in favor? Aye.
We have received notification, our tax rate is officially set. Our new tax rate is $8.67.
My gosh.
It's down $1.06 from last year's rate of $9.73.
Wow.
We have begun our.
May I imply, what are the amount of the assessments going up?
That depends.
On the house, but, yeah, I mean.
Well, they can't go up any more than two and a half percent. Your assessed value.
It's a reciprocal relationship.
Right.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah, I just want to be aware that while the tax rate will go down, the taxes still go up because the assessed value goes up usually.
Some of them do. It's up to the assesses, that's what they do. They'll, they'll look at, it's all based on sales, so it's driven by sales.
Sales near you.
Sales, neighborhood sales, I should qualify it. Neighborhood sales would dictate if you have properties in a certain area, you know, beachfront, they may be holding, you know, their values are increasing significantly, whereas other neighborhoods maybe stay the same.
Or decreasing.
Or decreasing, depending on what's happening in any particular location, but, yeah, the sales have the direct correlation to what's happening, so, for sure. Teamsters Local, we've begun our negotiations with our GPW, and we are waiting for dates to begin negotiations for the library who have joined the Teamsters.
Oh, they have?
Yep. We received notification a couple of weeks ago. The recount results, we had a recount Monday, which is the first one, I think, we've had since I've been here for the last 10 years or so. Very, it's exciting to watch the process and how it works, and the final results were Mirror 1987 and Casner 1875. And I believe Leslie said it changed by one vote. Mirror picked up one vote here. In, let's see, what else have I got? Oh, I just wanted to remind everyone, there was some discussion about ACO. Anyone having any issues that would require the attention of the animal control officer, they should all continue to be directed to the police department, as they always have been in the past. Chief Fisher and I are currently exploring potential regional opportunities with Rowley, Ipswich, and Bloxford at this point in time. And Senator Bruce Tar did meet with us last week to talk about potential regional aid, and if there might be any opportunities for us in that respect.
Well, that's good.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, correspondence, we have a letter from Comcast regarding fee increases. I did also receive an email from the select, from select, what did I forget? Julie, did you, did I ask you to forward that one along to the board? The one that woman that complained about Comcast being the only game in town? You guys may have gotten that, but unfortunately, until another company wants to come in here, there's nothing we can do. We're the only game in town. So, Comcast, we're always committed to delivering the entertainment and services that matter most to our customers and your community, as well as exciting experiences they won't find anywhere else. We are also focused on making our network stronger in order to meet our customers' current needs and future demands. As we continue to invest in our network products and services, the cost of doing business rises. Rising programming costs, most notably for broadcast TV and sports, continue to be the biggest factors driving price increases. While we absorb some of these costs, these fee increases affect service pricing. As a result, starting December 20th, 2022, prices for certain services and fees will be increasing, including the broadcast TV fee and the regional sports network fee. Close notices customers will receive within their bill starting November 20th, so most customers have already probably received them. If you have any questions, then you reach out to Carrie Morris, who's the senior manager at Government Regulatory Affairs. And that's that. And the other correspondence we got was this pretty pink card from Pink House. We got a holiday greetings for the board, dear Alicia, JR, Jeff, Geraldine, Dana, and Julie, happy holidays. Best wishes for peace and joy and everything merry and bright from all of us at Support the Pink House Inc. Isn't that a nice card?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have, any meeting updates? Did you have a DCC meeting just recently, or is it canceled?
It canceled.
That was canceled.
It's canceled?
Yeah, it was canceled. I just probably would note that the contract for the dredge in the period of time that it has to fulfill its dredge duty, which I believe is sometime either March 1st or March 31st. I think the little dredge has departed, and the big dredge is certainly in the river. And it's worth noting that it's not an easy job, because they have to have pipe that does have some latitude because of the accordion shape of the pipe, but it's a fixed pipe to a dredge that's trying to dredge our rivers in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
So, it's a tough job. I was down looking at the dredge, I took some pictures, and it's a wild, it's a wild piece of equipment, so that's going on for.
Have you heard anything, any?
I think they haven't done, the little dredge, I heard from one of the people that know quite a bit, the little dredge did a good job. They actually found some remnants of boats of good size in the middle of the river, so it kind of got in the way of, you know, underwater, but the, the big dredge is, this hasn't, I don't think really gotten going yet because of this tropical depression and everything else has been in place. It's been rough out there.
Wow.
Just on a note, from my days as being a docent at the Historical Society, there were 119 boats that sank.
In the river?
In the river, at where the river meets the ocean.
The mouth.
So, they were in the mouth, more than in the middle of the river?
Yeah.
These, they ran into something, I guess, further up inside the river, probably off a Woodbridge Island between there and the old icebreaker. But there, how many ships in the mouth?
119.
It's a terrible river, tough river.
Very, very, very dangerous, yeah.
That's great, that's a good piece of notice right there. Oh, tough river. I know that as a fact many times.
We have review of meeting minutes. We have these draft minutes. Do you want us to approve these draft minutes, Julie?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not going to vote on the 30th of November, since I wasn't present at that.
Okay, so we'll take them one at a time. I'll entertain a motion to approve draft minutes of 11:03.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft minutes from 11:07.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Now, I wasn't here on 11:08. I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft minutes on 11:08.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
But we don't have a quorum.
We'll do, put them off till next week, next, next meeting.
Okay.
So, the next two will.
And then we'll have a quorum for yours either. Okay, so we're just gonna do those two. Julie, put these other two on the.
Yep.
Okay. Actually, I think you can approve minutes, but that's all right. Warrants, a motion to sign warrants.
Motion, sign warrants.
Second?
Oh, you did it, second, yep.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. I did that one pretty well.
Fall in favor?
Aye.